I would like to leave him to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, approval of the minutes from November fourth.
I'll second that.
I have motion in second. Any questions? Comment or corrections? You men, call for question. Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Press?
Aye.
There votes aye as well. Motion passes. Item three. Citizen participation on agenda items only. If you have questions or concerns about agenda items, please come forward and ask them now and save main for the record.
John Hunter, Ten Mile, Oregon. I'm also here on behalf of Community Rights of Douglas County. Uh, there's several items I'm seeking clarification on that's up on your agenda. Seems, uh, that they're off the way. Item number four, the grant, the grants you're, uh, that you're giving out. It doesn't say it, but, uh, I assume that there are for Title III funding. Uh, you're, you're, and the money for, for the two vehicles, there's not a clarification as to where that money is coming from. Uh, I think on behalf of the public, it ought to be on the agenda and clear. Also be nice if there was some kind of, uh, legal documentation, uh, justifying the expenditure of, uh, uh, search and rescue funding from Title III to, uh, which is supposed to be used for reimbursement on search and rescue services on federal land. I'm hoping that you've got this documentation to prove that these vehicles are, are going to be used on federal land. And as for the bridge in McCalla Creek, you just say that that's Community Wildlife Protection Plan. I think that should be clarified too, and some legal justification against how that is, is justified source of spending for infrastructure. Number three, parks. Uh, there's been many PAV meetings this year. There was never any discussion about the four-year spending. I can assume that's the infamous, the infamous crab dock there that you already spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on. I'd like to get some clarification as if that, where, where's that money coming from? Is it coming from FEMA? I don't have plans to log another county park to help pay for it. Uh, number nine, public works, uh, hiring, laying forest, forest products for the removal of wood debris from the northern wildfires. I'd like to get some clarification on that, why this is necessary, where this wood debris is coming from. Would seem to be a lot more cost effective if at all is possible to leave that wood debris on the ground itself to, to provide nutrients, uh, to build the soil and back up from the fire. And number 10, uh, sheriffs agreement, uh, to deputy patrols on timber, on private timberland. Uh, this is the old event that's been going on for years. You go through this at least once or twice a year, but it would be nice if they had some, uh, statistics, some, uh, some kind of evidence to show that, uh, that this is actually, uh, an effective crime, crime preventing tool. There's an awful lot of private timberland in Douglas County for just, uh, one, uh, this one patrol officer to be patrolling. Thank you.
Anyone else have comments? You men, you all by number four.
Thank you. So, uh, this is our, um, Title III grant approval, um, here this year. And there was two applicants. One was Douglas County Fire District Two and one was Douglas County Public Works. That will be approved today. So I want to give a quick history of Title III so everybody's on the same page. So Title III is a product of the Security World Schools program. I'll remind everybody that before there was Security World Schools, dollars came to the county in the form of timber receipts, really in two buckets. One was from timber receipts off of O and C land, and those were treated as general fund to the county. And then there was timber receipts that came to the county off US Forest Service, uh, timber sold. And those came with restrictions for public works projects, uh, roads, bridges, and the state of Oregon also allows, um, those Title III Security World School dollars now to be spent on sheriff's patrol. I'm sorry, the Title I dollars to be spent on sheriff's patrol. So, um, timber receipts as they came before were all, um, came as, uh, really just a, a product of selling the timber and the proceeds shared with counties, uh, and that program went on for a very long time. So when Security World School came in, they divvied up that replacement money, or that in lieu of production, uh, with Security World Schools into a Title I, Title II, and Title III. Now, on, um, on the Title III specific portion of the Security World Schools, the way those dollars can be spent has changed multiple times, and I'm not going to spend an hour going through all that. However, in the most current version, uh, it was changed just a few years ago, um, there is, uh, the ability to use Title III dollars for search and rescue mission reimbursement, as Mr. Hunter said, but also for search and rescue equipment, training, and patrols. That's early in the law and that's allowed. So the first category that we're approving today is Douglas County Fire District Two. This will be a reimbursable grant. They have put in, uh, to purchase a vehicle, one vehicle over the next two years, so for a total of two vehicles, uh, up to $60,000. And those will be reimbursable, and those do qualify under the new, uh, current use of those dollars. Another change that was made, uh, in the most recent, um, version of the Title III program, historically, it talked about, um, the wildfire protection plan, so it was deemed to be, um, dollars that are going to be spent on planning. And the last change to the Security World Schools, uh, reauthorization, the Title III portion that dealt with, um, wildfire protection plan, including, uh, words that say "and" carry out. We've clarified that, uh, which means the same thing as implement. Matter of fact, one version of the work that Congress is doing used the word implement. At some point, that changed to carry out, but those words are interchangeable. So, uh, recently, Douglas County, uh, Douglas County Planning Department went through a very lengthy process of updating the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. In that process, they traveled throughout the county, held public meetings, took input from the public. And one of the concerns and one of the, uh, projects they want to address in the plan is access to fire-prone areas. Uh, we have, uh, as you know, we have bridges that are failing, uh, and there's been fires where, uh, fire equipment can't access the fire. They have to travel a long ways around it, uh, to get to the fire because the bridges aren't sufficient to have the fire equipment cross them. So, uh, this second application today for Douglas County Public Works meets the criteria under the current, uh, allowance of Title III, uh, for carrying out the wildfire protection plan, uh, and it is, um, I would say it meets all the requirements. And so with that, I will move to approve the two grant agreements.
I'll second that. We have, Mr. President, second. Any questions or comments? Call for question. Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Press?
Aye.
There vote aye as well. Motion passes. Item number five, Parks Contract Extension. Good morning, Mr. Houston.
Good morning, for the record, Rock Houston, for the record, Douglas County Parks. In terms of using an extension of a contract between Douglas County and Dowell LLC, used to be called Obec, but there was a merger. Uh, this contract provides for engineering and permitting services to rehabilitate, uh, those items on the crab dock that were damaged in the FEMA storm flood event. So all of that stuff got in the water, my water went down there, and we have some damage. So this is just the engineering portion of that. It is funded at 75 cents on the dollar, uh, for the, for the supplemental terms to, for the contract extension.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in second for the contract extension. Any questions, comments? You men, call for question. Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Press?
Aye.
Sheriff votes aye as well. Motion passes. Item five, Rocky.
Item six, um, they are the same thing. The, uh, after we had signed these, the extension, we identified that we did not have all of the, uh, language that we should have there to ensure, uh, any future audit from FEMA, so this was a lot to include that FEMA, uh, language. In addition, I've forgotten the last setting is that, uh, the PAV is aware of the damage and our, our activities to, to, for, and that was discussed a long time ago, uh, when the original act is approved.
So I'll move, uh, to approve the supplemental terms to the contract.
I'll second that. Motion second. Questions or comments?
And I do appreciate you keeping the Parks Advisory Board informed that this is an operational thing. This is damage to a, an asset that we have that needs to be repaired, so, uh, this isn't a policy thing that they would recommend to us anyway. It's an operational fixing damage, so, again, thank you for keeping them informed.
Call for question. Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Press?
Aye.
There vote aye as well. Motion passes. Thank you. Item number seven, planning and hearing for annexation. Mr. Shackle, good morning.
Morning Commissioners, Joshua Shackle, Douglas County. For you this morning is a hearing and order incorporating territory for an owner-initiated annexation of property into Elton Rural Fire Protection District. Chief Petitioners Stephen and Mary Ferreira. Subject properties consist of two parcels combined for, um, 17.93 acres in size at 776 and 501 Tucker Way Lane in Elton. There are two existing dwellings on the properties, and it is zone 5 R, and it is intentional. Land and staff finds the annexation is in compliance with the county comprehensive plan and statewide planning rules. Staff has no objections and has received no objections from the public to this accusation.
Open the public hearing. Has any public testimony regarding the annexation? Seeing none, close the public hearing.
We will move to approve the order incorporating territory.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in second to approve the order incorporating the territory. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, call for question. Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Press?
Aye.
Sheriff votes aye as well. Motion passes. Item number eight, that is another hearing grant.
Again, Joshua Shackle, Douglas County. For you this morning is an owner-initiated annexation of property into Calabooa Rural Fire Protection District for Chief Petitioners Kathy and Bradley Watson. Property to be annexed consists of approximately 109 acres at 4,900 State Highway 138 West in Elton, uh, Oak. There is one existing dwelling, and it is zone 2 Farm Forest. The annexation has determined to be in compliance with the state planning goals and the county comprehensive plan. Staff has no objections and has received no objections from the public on this annexation.
I'll open the public hearing. The comment on the annexation, seeing none, close the public hearing.
I will move, um, to approve our annexation and order appropriate judgment.
I'll second that. We have a motion in second. Any questions, comments? You men, call for question. Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Press?
Aye.
Sheriff votes aye as well. Motion passes. Item number nine, Public Works.
Good morning Commissioners, Scott Adams, Public Works. Item nine is a contract between Douglas County and Lane Forest Products for the processing removal of, uh, wood and debris from the wildfire fires, the Archie Creek fires specifically. This, uh, debris came from Rock Creek Road in Annabelle, and it's, you know, it's that decline mill where we chipped it up and all of that.
Move to approve the contract.
I'll second that.
I've answered one of the questions about why it's going to be left on the ground because it was in the road. Correct?
Yes. Majority of the, uh, the stuff was in the road, uh, came from trees falling off the trees. When the trees started coming down, it'd go on a wooded debris. If we leave the wooded debris on the sides of the roads, that will continue to fall into the roads and will create a hazard to the public, so we had to remove all the hazards for the public. An effort to mitigate the area for future growth and whatnot will be, uh, kind of seeding with spring on those sides and slopes, uh, trying to do this future inspection, but that will also help hold the slope, uh, stabilize the slopes up there.
Call for question. Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Press?
Aye.
There vote aye as well. Motion passes. Item number ten, Sheriff's item. We've got the Sheriff this morning. Morning, Mr. Freeman.
Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Freeman, Sheriff. So this is a agreement for deputy patrols on timberland for timberland holdings for those timber operators for fiscal year 21. Companies agree to share the cost, uh, payment to Douglas County for one full-time employee deputy to patrol their respective timberlands for a sum of $155,309, of which $120,309 of that is from timberlands and $45,000 comes from pal tree.
So I'll move to approve the agreement.
I'll second that. There vote a second. Questions or comments?
Yeah, so, so a couple things. I'll make a couple comments, maybe even add two. So, uh, currently, I know that 100% of the property tax the county collects from all the property tax payers here in Douglas County goes to the Sheriff's Department. So these property owners who pay the property tax, all their, uh, the county property tax is already going for Sheriff's Services. This group of individuals got together, business owners, and said they want additional patrols, and they contract with the Sheriff. And I, uh, I noticed, and it's a fact, we do that with other organizations too, so there was a question about, does this provide value? So the value question really is to those of the paying, the money they must think it provides value, because they're paying for it, right? It's optional.
Yes, it is. And if yes, it's very valuable to them.
Call for question. Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Press?
Aye.
There vote aye as well. Motion passes. Thank you. We'll skip the intermissions, going, go straight to citizen participation. Anyone wishing to make comments this morning, please come to the, or anyone to save your name for the record.
Uh, John Hunter, Ten Mile, uh, just got a few comments here, uh, just sort of ongoing questions about the, whether or not, uh, the Title III funds are being spent properly or improperly, uh, and the lack of county revenue. Uh, it's an old story, but there's one solution there. There's a movement starting, and it's gaining traction from the Oregon Legislature, and that is to reinstate the harvest tax. And this can be done in a way that will provide more revenue for the county. And I, I think as county commissioners, it should be your job to support this because you should want to generate revenue that is going to benefit everybody in the county. And it, it can go towards some of these issues here that always cause controversy with, with, with the use of Title III, uh, III funds. I, I would strongly urge you to urge our local representative to back the reinstatement of the timber harvest tax. In Washington, Oregon, in Washington, Cali, or in Washington, California, Washington, Washington, Idaho, the timber companies have not packed up and left. This would be a great benefit for everybody in Douglas County. We'll have more services available that, that they deserve. Also, there's another thing coming up before the state legislature that you know about, and I think you should urge your, the state legislatures to support it, and that is to gain, to gain momentum for the establishment of a, of a community rights, rights amendment at the state. This, this would secure right, rights of the people and local government to advance to advance protection for the health, safety, and welfare of, of, of natural people, communities, and, and nature, while, while also respecting protections and, and rights already secured by state and federal law. For, for, uh, for a group of people that have issues with, with, uh, with state overreach, this is a natural amendment for you to support, and I urge you to do it. Thank you.
Anyone else who could come forward with any comments?
Senator LeBlanc, Community Rights, Douglas County. Uh, since we submitted our comments in writing, uh, about the reconstruction of the bridge and the purchase of the vehicles, uh, which, uh, General Counsel of Department of Agriculture and Department of Interior have inherently viewed, uh, determine, uh, is not legal, uh, consistent with Title III. Upon further investigation, Senator Wyden and Senator McCallie, um, also are concerned with such uses because as, uh, revealed, D A O points out, permanent structures and purchases do not, are not consistent with Title III. Wanted to bring that up in public counsel. For all of the public to be aware of, um, I know that, uh, since the Act was written in 2000 and reauthorized in 2008, because many terms have been widely defined, it has been a grab bag, and there hasn't been any oversight, and it's continued to be a grab bag, a slippery slope, one might say, of priorities. And it's time priorities were really thrown in, but with that reconstruction of the bridge and the purchase of the vehicle, that's not slippery slope. The General Counsel has stated, and it was listed in my argument, that, uh, that Community Rights submitted to you, it's in black and white, that they, they don't support purchases or the reconstruction of bridges or purchases of vehicles. Vehicles are reimbursement, so that's, that's not any question. The next thing that I wanted to bring up, um, until we can get this, you know, really sorted out and stop such grab bags things, um, why is it that the Public Works isn't just maintaining roads and bridges for all of the county? It seems like if the roads and bridges are not maintained on a regular basis, it's a bit like a farmer attempting to sow seeds before plowing. Can't plant the seeds if you have a cloud field. Well, you can't expect the roads and the bridges to be fair, well, if you're not taking care of it. And you can't expect the people of this county to be paying for something that the logging industry is using more than they are. I know there are a few people that live on the other side of that bridge, and we need to take care of them. We do. But we can't expect what the logging industry is destroying to have those people of the county to be paying for it. Seems to me like we've got, um, David and Belia's story here, and I always fall on the side of David, not Belia. So, I don't know, we've got harvest tax going on, we've got misappropriation of funds going on, we've got all sorts of things going on, and I don't know if you, like I did, were all listening to Johnny Horton, but folks, we've got a hole in our feet, you know? And the last thing I want to let, leave you with is, um, the Community Rights of Douglas County, we'd like to see the, um, impact report from the environmental agencies you contacted before you start reconstructing any bridges in this county. Thank you.
Anyone else who's going to come forward and make statements?
Hello, uh, my name is Daniel Lekendo, and I'm a resident of Milo, uh, Oregon, Douglas County. I'm just standing up here to sort of reiterate a little bit of what I just heard. Our roads and bridges are being eroded away and not taken care of properly, and I am concerned that that burden is then shifted onto the taxpayers, uh, being the residents of this county, and, um, private timber is not contributing towards the, the public, uh, infrastructure that they use, and they get to privatize that, their, uh, profit without, like, contributing to our communities. And that's an concern that I have, and I implore y'all to explore reinstatement of ideas like, uh, timber severance in order to help, uh, we, uh, keep up our roads and bridges and using things like libraries and schools. Thank you.
Anyone else who's going to come forward and make statements?
Hello, I'm First John, and I'm one of the Milo residents as well, and I graduated from Bay Creek High School. I saw in 2016, they decided to, or around 2015 it could be, when they decided to actually finally fix the Stouts Creek, um, Bridge, they didn't fix that bridge until a fire happened. That bridge has been terrible for years. No one ever thought to actually take care of something that many community members, many children cross every day. And the only reason we did that was to help more timber people be able to go through there so they can keep logging out all of that dead timber. Maybe instead of actually climbing the things as they happen, after they happen, we start funding our community before things get bad. And another thing is, is that we are paying the most of the property taxes. My family is paying most of the property taxes. The large corporations who own these lands, who we are saying, like, the timber receipts, they pay an eighth of a percent. They do not pay as much as the rest of the community. And it's ridiculous that we don't have extra income coming in to our community when we have an opportunity. And I would like to point out, there is a reason why this timber severance isn't getting taxed here, or even pushed by you guys, if you look at your own pocketbooks and where the money is coming from. Thank you.
Anyone else who's going to come forward and make comments?
Yeah, so a couple things. So I, I appreciate that you all took the time to study the 2000 bold Government Accountability Office Report. I've read it many times. Something you should note, uh, Douglas County is one of the highest-receiving, uh, Security World School counties in the nation, so we are always a part of these reports and studies that are done. In that report, you'll find nowhere mentioned that Douglas County has done anything wrong or covered in the spending of Title III dollars or anything else that's in the report. So there's never been any sort of misappropriation or funding that is not done right. Raise your hand. You talk, I'm talking. Tell me what it says. So now, you are trying to apply the current process we're going to with a law that is different than it was in 2012. In 2012, vehicle purchases as part of search and rescue or equipment purchases would not have been allowed. Today it is. So you're using an old So you're using an old version of Title III. And my statement when I started, I said it's changed many times.
We've lost that paperwork.
This is not the only time it's changed. So, please, if you're gonna take the time to study this and be informed on it, get the most current version of the Title III law that allows, again, on the search and rescue column, instead of just reimbursing permissions, it allows equipment, it allows patrols, uh, and it allows, um, there's three categories, equipment, patrols, and, um, training.
Training.
Training. So those three things were not allowed in two thousand and twelve, and now they are allowed. So again, Congress changed that, not the Douglas County Department Commissioners, were following, uh, the report, or the law. In the GOA report, it also talked about how the counties they looked at, some counties were not doing certain things that enlisted those things. One of the things that enlisted was turning in the annual report. Douglas County's always turned in their annual reports, so some of the other counties they looked at had not been doing that, but we have. So, uh, please, be careful, if you're gonna do this work, to follow the most current, because that's what we have to follow here. So, somebody asked about how we used to maintain roads. So as Douglas County developed, way before any of these commissioners here, even before we were alive, um, there was this great relationship between the federal government and county government. And that relationship, including when federal timber, publicly owned timber was sold into the market, that the federal government shared a portion of those receipts, not taxing, nothing to do with taxing, but, but because they were government owned timber, they shared a portion of that value or that receipt that was generated when that timber was sold into market. The county, Douglas County and many other counties, used those dollars to take on additional, um, services for the public because they had plenty of money to do it. Including taking on, we have three hundred and six, three hundred and eight bridges that we take care of, uh, and almost fourteen hundred miles of road. And it made sense for the county to do that work then because they had plenty of revenue coming in, uh, from the, from the Forest Service, primarily is where the road money came from. And they also took on a lot of other, the county also took on a lot of other services, like one of the most extensive library systems, so they brought up libraries, paid for out of OMC.
Why they are closed.
Continue to be the highest OMC county. Uh, they took on services, um, like bought all the transfer stations and landfills from all the cities and took on that system. We still operate the most extensive, um, transit system of any county. Uh, those things happened because the county literally had more money than they could spend, uh, for many years because of timber receipts, not severance tax. Make sure everybody gets that right. Taxation is a great topic to talk about, it's just different than, than timber receipts.
The libraries are paid for by private, privateation right now.
If you'd be quiet and letting talk, you'll find that out.
Okay.
So, what the counties had to do, and this has happened before we got here, you know, we're the people here now, so it's fine to be upset with us, but prior to us, starting in two thousand and twelve...